One moment, Commissioner, let me look. Not that I currently see, no, Commissioner. Yes.
Good morning. This is Commission President Toshiko Hasagawa reconvening the regular meeting of August 12, 2025. The time is 12:03 PM. We are meeting in person today at the Port of Seattle headquarters building in the Commission chambers, as well as virtually on Microsoft Teams. Clerk Hart, please call the roll for all of the Commissioners who are in attendance today.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner President. I believe Commissioner Calkins is in the building and will be joining us here shortly. Commissioner Cho.
Present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Phelan, I understand, will also be joining us virtually today. Still waiting his arrival. Commissioner Hasagawa.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Mohammed.
Yes.
Thank you. We do have a quorum established.
Thank you very much. And we have been joined for the record by Commissioner Calkins. Just a few housekeeping items before we begin. For everyone in the meeting room, please do turn your cellphones to silent. And for anyone participating online on Microsoft Teams, please do mute your speakers when not actively speaking or presenting. Please keep your cameras off unless you're a Commissioner or a member of staff participating virtually and are actively addressing the Commission. Members of the public addressing the Commission during public comment may turn on their cameras when their name is called to speak and turn them back off again at the conclusion of their remarks. For anyone at the dais, please turn off your computer speakers and silence your devices. And please also remember to address your requests to speak through the chair and wait to speak until you've been recognized. You'll turn your microphones on and off as needed. Thank you. All of our votes today will be taken by the roll call method or by general consent, so it's clear for anyone participating virtually how our votes are cast. Commissioners will say aye or nay when their names are called. I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the ancestral lands and the waters of the Coast Salish people with whom we share a commitment to steward these natural resources for ourselves and for future generations. This meeting is being digitally recorded and may be viewed or heard at any time on the port's website and may be rebroadcast by King County Television. And now I'd like to ask that you all please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business today is the approval of the agenda. As a reminder, if a Commissioner wishes to make a general comment for or against an item on the consent agenda, it's not necessary to pull that item for a separate discussion, rather. A Commissioner may offer general supporting or opposing comments later in this meeting once we get to that part of the agenda. However, it is appropriate if a Commissioner wants to ask questions of staff or wishes to have a dialogue on a consent agenda item to request that the item be pulled for a separate discussion at this time. So Commissioners, are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda or any additional items to re- or motions to rearrange the orders of the day? Seeing none. Oh, Commissioner Mohammed.
Thank you, Commission President Hasagawa. I'd like to pull item 8J. I'd actually like to get an update, and I believe staff is aware of this and are prepared to provide a short presentation and give us a progress report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mohammed has removed item 8J for a separate discussion. Anything else? Seeing none, Commissioners, the question's on approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
The motion's been made, the second, by Commissioner Calkins and Commissioner Cho. Is there any objection to the approval of the agenda? And hearing none, we are now approved as amended. Next, our agenda is the Executive Director's Report. So Executive Director Metrick, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Hasagawa. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Before we move to our meeting today, I have a few brief updates I'd like to provide. July was one for the record books for SEA with, even with major construction underway. We screened more than 1.8 million checked bags through our baggage system. TSA screened over 2.1 million passengers for the month, including our busiest day ever, last Sunday, with 78,763 outbound passengers on August 10th. Said, well, what was special about August 10th? It was Sunday, August 10th, and that's why we set a new record. And the overall volume was approximately also a record of 207,000 passengers. And despite the increase, TSA reports that the average wait times, although busy, were 33% lower than past summers. Our staff continues to evaluate and adapt to what works best at the TSA screening checkpoints. The big news in that regard is that the TSA pre-check and clear options moved to the new baggage claim checkpoint one, which is proving to be increasingly popular and has more room for queuing, as you know. The old checkpoint one, now checkpoint two, will be general screening with SEA Spot Saver. So those are a lot of changes. So if everyone did not catch all of that, I'll encourage everyone to follow the airport on social media where we will keep travelers updated on all these changes. On the international side, we welcomed over 302,000 arriving passengers in July with a peak day of 11,281 in our international arrivals facility on July 26th. Our car rental shuttles moved more than 660,000 passengers between the terminal and the rental car facility, making more than 14,600 trips. These results are a testament to the dedication of our aviation staff and port, police, and fire department during the peak summer travel season before us. Shifting gears and speaking of the fire department, I'm pleased to share a recognition for our port fire department that is truly historic. Last week, we learned that the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau upgraded our fire protection rating from Class III to Class I, their highest possible designation. And to give you a sense of the range, this range goes from, the lowest class is 10 to 1. The only other fire department in the Bureau's 114-year history, only one other fire department in the 114-year history has reached this level. This evaluation looks at training, staffing, equipment, response times, water supply, and fire prevention programs, and using national standards from the NFPA and the AWWA. This achievement reflects years of investment in our factor in determining insurance premiums for homeowners and commercial properties in our area. This is a major credit to the professionalism, training, and readiness of our fire department that works around the clock, serving and protecting our facilities and those that use them. Matter of fact, many of the team are in attendance today since we plan to seek your authorization to approve a new collective bargain agreement on the consent agenda, and I'd like to have them rise so we can give them a round of applause for the work that they do. Thank you, Chief Graust. So just two more aviation updates as I continue here. I was just overtaken with that. Two more aviation updates. I want to make, I want to be sure to note that last week Alaska Airlines announced new nonstop services to London and Reykjavik starting in spring of 2026. These flights will operate on Alaska's redesigned Boeing 787 Dreamliners, which feature an updated cabin design to support their expanded global service vision. The Washington, the Washington, the Washington, the Wall Street Journal wrote an extensive article about the future of Seattle as a global hub for international services, and I appreciated Commissioner Cho's comment that we feel very fortunate to have two major carriers call Seattle home. And we continue to work hard to ensure that we create an airport environment where shared vision can lead to shared success for multiple stakeholders. Finally, for aviation, I have an update on our sound insulation repair and replacement pilot program. After completing the assessment in 2024, we transitioned into the next phase, which is acoustic testing. 262 homes received an invitation for testing. Homes contacted, represented those in the highest noise DNLs with the oldest insulation packages. Thirty-two homeowners responded with interest in testing. At this point, 111 homes have either been tested or have an appointment for testing. We've received results for the first 30 homes tested and will be notifying these homeowners of the results this month. Port staff also expanded technical assistance for residents who may wish to replace windows for other reasons or on a faster timeline than the port can deliver. These new resources help residents search for windows or replacement parts. The information was made available on the port's website this spring and mailed to nearby homes. Moving to maritime updates, I have an update on an issue that's been on the radio, in social media, and raised by the IBEW at the last Commission meeting here at Pier 69. I wanted to let you know I've directed staff to follow up on the reported safety issues raised by the IBEW at the Terminal 86 Grain Facility. Our Maritime Division and Safety Leaders have spoken with the tenant, Louis Dreyfus Company, and met with the company leadership. As part of our due diligence, we received an extensive list of improvements Louis Dreyfus Company performed at the facility and reviewed the Washington State Labor and Industries records from their August 2024 inspection and their January 2025 inspection. As a next step, we plan to tour the facility and appreciate Louis Dreyfus Company offering that opportunity along with these conversations with their leadership. As I shared with the IBEW leadership in a personal meeting last week, I take safety concerns very seriously and will continue to follow up on the issues that were raised. Continuing with our maritime updates, we are now two-thirds through our cruise calls for the season. Through July, we welcomed 1.1 million revenue passengers. Of course, remember, we count passengers coming and going, so that's 575,000 unique passengers if you count individuals traveling. We have an excellent news on the shore power front. With the additional shore power at Pier 66, we have more, we have had more than 45 ships utilize shore power connections this year for a total of 113 ship-to-shore connections through July. This is great progress. Later this summer, we'll have an update on the biofuel project that Carnival Cruise Lines is in the process of running. We're excited about the operational learnings from that work. We'll have more information in our end-of-season update as we expect even greater results on the sustainability and economic development for the year. Moving to today's Commission meeting, the theme seems to be infrastructure. I'd like to highlight a few items on today's agenda. On our consent agenda, we have a contract to support comprehensive airport planning, construction of smart meters across our waterfront facilities, design support for Terminal 91, and installation of EV fast charging points at the South 160th Street TNC lot. For new business, we'll be seeking to fund, funding to complete the design for our Northwest Dock at Fisherman's Terminal. Finally, the marquee item for our meeting today is our second quarter financial performance briefing. At our last Commission meeting, staff briefed you on the 2026 budget development process, and Deputy Executive Director Karen Goon sat in for me at that meeting and shared my budget guidance to the staff at that meeting, which I will repeat here. The port faces economic and political uncertainty with slower growth and reduced federal funding expected throughout the rest of 2025 and into 2026, along with potential inflation, including inflation from tariffs. We're already seeing soft, softening revenue growth, so our focus is on avoiding overextension while continuing to invest for the future. For the 2026 budget, we're taking a conservative approach that aligns expenses with revenues and preserves funding capacity. Currently, we're not planning any layoffs or benefit cuts, but we must slow down growth in new hires and non-payroll costs. Payroll makes up over 60% of our operating budget, and outside services add another 25%. By controlling expenses and prioritizing work today, we can meet the needs for today and stay ambitious for the future and keep the port in a strong position to deliver for the region. So Commissioners, I'll have more detailed comments on that when we review the second quarter performance later in this meeting. And Commissioners, this concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Director Metrick. And that brings us swiftly forward to our committee reports, which will be presented by Strategic Advisor Erica Chung. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Commissioners, Executive Director Metrick. I have seven committee reports for you since the last Commission meeting, so I'll try my best to read them quickly. On July 15, Commissioners Hasagawa and Mohammed convened the Airport Workforce Conditions Ad Hoc Committee, where they received a briefing on the SEA Workers' Healthcare Study Findings, which analyzed the effects of healthcare benefits on business outcomes. Commissioners thanked the researchers for their thorough analysis and recommended for staff to conduct external and business partner stakeholder engagements and approve the proposed timeline for the policy development. The Audit Committee was convened on July 15 with Commissioners Calkins and Mohammed in attendance, joined by Public Member Sarah Holmstrom. The committee received the 2024 Financial Statement Audit Results from External Auditor Maz Adams. The audit looked at the internal control environment, management estimates, the Northwest Seaport Alliance joint venture, looked at capital assets, bond activity, environmental remediation liability, revenue recognition, airline lease and operating agreements, compensated absences, fiduciary activity, and the FAA Airport Improvement Program. There were no uncorrected adjustments identified as part of the auditor's procedure and no internal control or compliance findings were made. The committee further received general audit updates, approved an update to the 2025 audit plan, and received performance audit and limited control compliance audit reports. Committee members then recessed to close session to discuss security-sensitive information related to third-party risk management. On July 29, Commissioners Phelan and Cho convened the Aviation Committee. Commissioners discussed the external TSA checking idea and potential barriers. Commissioners then asked how bus service will work during the 2026 FIFA World Cup and how that service could be continued after the event. Next, Commissioners were briefed on the 2026 SEA Business Plan, which emphasized SEA's strength, discussed challenges ahead, and set goals for the year. Commissioners and staff reaffirmed commitments to Port's Sustainable Evaluation Framework and inquired into the port's current non-aviation revenue. Finally, Commissioners were updated on current federal funding risks and discussed how best to mitigate the potential loss. Equity and Workforce Development Committee met on July 15 with Commissioners Mohammed and Hasagawa in attendance with two briefings, an update on the Youth Maritime Career Launch Program, followed by a report out of the Port of Seattle's Anti-Human Trafficking Initiative. On July 15, Commissioners Calkins and Cho convened the Sustainability, Environment, and Climate Committee, where they received an update on the central mechanical plant decarbonization and resiliency study and next steps, which is part of the port's pathway to net zero by 2040, Scope 1 and Scope 2 action. After much discussion, Commissioners approved the recommendation to move forward with emerging technology strategy and centralized generation system. Sustainability, Environment, and Climate Committee also met with Commissioners Cho and Calkins on August 8. Commissioners were briefed on the Sustainable Maritime Fuels Collaborative Development from its initial planning in 2023, including stakeholders, stakeholders, excuse me, mission and value structure in short-term and long-term priorities, then discussed next steps forward, engagement with the hydrogen hub, and reasons for building capacity and demand early. The Highline Forum hosted by Highline College met on July 23 with Takwila Councilmember Papion, chairing with Commissioner Cho traveling. As the host, Vice President Institutional Advancement, Josh Gerstman delivered a comprehensive update on college activities. Then-CEO and President of Explore Seattle's South Side, Mark Everton, and the Seattle South Side Chamber of Commerce, Samantha Lee, aided by Sidney Marks Nichols from Explore Seattle's South Side, provided an overview of the activities and information available to the local communities and planning ahead for the 2026 FIFA World Cup. Next, Highline Colleges, Dr. Tanya Powers, Highline Schools District, Gay Berguard, and Port of Seattle, Anna Pavlik, shared their commitments and efforts towards workforce development programs in the Highline area. Then Interim Aviation Managing Director, Eric Gaus, provided an update from Start Committee. He noted that Start members have begun the community's roundtable's work plan for next year. During the roundtable, round-the-table sharing, Port Local Government Relations Manager Dave Kaplan shared an update on the Sustainable Airport Master Plan Environmental Review Process. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Erica. I feel like we should give you a round of applause. We have a very warm room here today. Okay, so let's go ahead and move forward. We can continue to, the public comment portion of our meeting. The Port Commission welcomes public comment as an important part of the public process. I feel like I need to say that again. The Port Commission welcomes public comment as an important part of the public process. Comments are received and considered by the Commission and its deliberations. Before we take public comment, let's review our rules for in-person and virtual public comment. And Clerk Hart, please play the recorded roles.
The Port of Seattle Commission welcomes you to our meeting today. As noted, public comment is an important part of the public process, and the Port of Seattle Commission thanks you for joining us. Before proceeding, we will overview the rules governing public comment for your general information. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak unless otherwise revised by the presiding officer for the purposes of meeting efficiency, and the speaker shall keep their remarks within the allotted time provided. A timer will appear on the screen, and a buzzer will sound at the end of the speaker's comment period. The Commission accepts comments on items appearing on its agenda and items related to the conduct of port business. Presiding Officer will ask speakers to limit their comments to these topics. This rule applies to both introductory and concluding remarks. Disruptions of Commission public meetings are prohibited. General disruptions include, but are not limited to, the following: speaking before being recognized by the presiding officer, holding
Technical difficulties.
Or placing signs in the meeting room in a way that endangers others or obstructs the flow of people or view of others at the meeting; intentionally disrupting, disturbing, or otherwise impeding attendance or participation at a meeting; refusing to follow the direction of the presiding officer or security personnel; attempting to use the comment time for purposeful delay without conveying a discernible message; using the comment period to assist in a campaign for election of any person to any office or for the promotion of or opposition to any ballot proposition except when addressing action being taken by the Commission on a ballot proposition appearing on its agenda; directing public comments to the audience; engaging in abusive or harassing behavior, including but not limited to derogatory remarks based on age, race, color, national origin, ancestry, religion, disability, pregnancy, sex, gender, sexual orientation, transgender status, marital status, or any other category protected by law; the use of obscene or profane language and gestures, assaults or other threatening behavior, and sexual misconduct or sexual harassment. For safety purposes, individuals are asked not to physically approach Commissioners or staff at the meeting table during the meeting. Individuals may provide written public comment before or after the meeting, and in addition, speakers may offer written materials to the Commission clerk for distribution during their testimony to the Commission. A detailed list of the public comment rules is available through the Commission clerk. If a meeting is disrupted by an individual in attendance in the meeting room or by an individual providing public comment in person or virtually, the port will impose progressive consequences that may result in exclusion from future meetings. Written materials provided to the clerk will be included in today's meeting record. The clerk has a list of those prepared to speak. When your name is called, please come to the testimony table or unmute yourself if joining virtually. Repeat your name for the record and state your topic related to an item on the agenda or related to the conduct of port business. For those joining virtually, when you have concluded your remarks, please turn off your camera and mute your microphone. Our public comment period will now commence. Thank you again for joining us today.
Okey-dokey. So Clerk Hart, can you take us through those who have signed up in advance who are present in the room today?
Certainly. We have one sign up today from the room, and Madam Commissioner President, we had nobody sign up virtually today.
Acknowledge.
So this is Sally Andrews.
Sally, if you could please just repeat your name for the record and your item related to the conduct of port business or an agenda item. Thank you.
Of course. Welcome, Sally.
Thank you. I'm the Seattle-based representative for Cruise Lines International Association, or CLIA, and I'm here to talk about cruise. I'm also here today to offer appreciation. Today, we're 65% of the way through the summer cruise season. On behalf of CLIA and our member lines, I would like to offer our thanks for the work of the Port Commission and the time that Commissioners have taken to continue to learn all about the cruise industry is doing to protect the environment, protect marine mammals in local waters, and provide support, training, and career opportunities for our crews. I would also like to thank Executive Director Metrick and his staff for all those working so hard to ensure smooth operations throughout the season, shore power availability at all the berths, and a great guest experience for the 1.9 million revenue passengers that will pass through the port this year. At this point, our local economy has already benefited from around 780 million of the 1.2 billion in economic impact that cruise brings to our region. Thank you to the port for that most recent economic impact study showing how valuable cruise is to our local businesses. I know there's some agenda items today that either directly or indirectly benefit our industry and our passengers. The support of unions, like those on the agenda today, show your commitment to the strength of the workforce, and we are appreciative of all that goes into keeping those relationships strong. And of course, all the improvements being made at the airport will benefit cruise passengers coming through Seattle for many years to come. As we wind down this cruise season and start thinking ahead to 2026, we look forward to our continued partnership and innovation to achieve our shared goals around decarbonization and sustainable tourism. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody who did not sign up in advance who's in the room who would like to address the Commission? How about anybody online? Okay, going once, going twice. Seeing none, that concludes our public comment. Would you give us a synopsis of the written comments that were submitted? Clerk Hart, please.
And in keeping with our pace today, we've received no written comments for the meeting today.
All right. Hearing no further testimony, we will move forward in our agenda. That brings us to our consent agenda. Items of the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion. The item that was removed from the consent agenda will be considered separately immediately after the adoption of the other consent agenda items. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda covering items 8A through 8I.
So moved.
Second. The motion's been made by Commissioner Cho and seconded by Commissioner Mohammed. Please say aye or nay, Commissioners, when your name's called for approval of the consent agenda.
Beginning with Commissioner Calkins.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I do think I have a comment on the agenda before we move and take action. So Commissioner Cho.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I just want to acknowledge the presence of best-in-class firefighters in the room. Let me just start by saying, I, yes. You know, I have so much appreciation for what these guys do and women. Obviously, some of us have had the opportunity to go experience their day-to-day, but I always point out to folks, even, you know, I'm not going to lie, guys, when I talk to other elected officials who have gone to Fire Ops, and they're like, oh, yeah, like, Fire Ops was awesome. And it's like, you know what's more awesome? The firefighters at the airport, because they do so much more than your firefighters do, right? Like, you don't, you don't realize fighting a fire at an airport or on a plane is so much more difficult and different than what you guys deal with. Not to say it's a competition, but if there were a competition, clearly, we're best-in-class. And so I just got to thank our guys and our women for the service you provide, for putting your lives on the line every day, for keeping our constituents safe, our travelers safe, and the leadership you bring to this entire region. And obviously, I know from having conversations with some of my fellow electives across the region that they sincerely appreciate it when the Port of Seattle Fire Department can provide mutual aid to their departments whenever they face situations where their engines aren't capable of dealing with or they're not, you know, they don't have the capacity. And so thank you, guys, for not just what you do here at the Port of Seattle, but also what you guys do to support our fellow firefighters across the region. And I just want to say congratulations.
Thank you for those comments. Anybody else? Seeing none, Clerk Hart, please call the roll.
Thank you, beginning with Commissioner Calkins.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Phelan still has not joined us as of this time. Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Hasagawa.
Aye.
Thank you. Four ayes and zero nays for this item.
Very good. The motion carries. And that brings us on to item 8J. Clerk Hart, please introduce the item, and then Executive Director Metrick will present it.
Thank you. This is Agenda Item 8J. Authorization for the Executive Director to take all steps necessary to complete the South 160th Street TNC Lot Improvement Project at Seattle Tacoma International Airport in the requested amount of $1,100,000 for a total estimated project cost of $8,400,000.
Commissioners, this item requests Commission authorization for an additional 1.1 million to enhance the port-owned staging area for TNC and taxi operations at SEA, supporting key goals around sustainability, driver amenities, and equity. While most improvements such as lighting, restrooms, and infrastructure upgrades are complete, this request funds the final phase installation of the EV, the 10 EV fast charging points, which the port will procure and install directly. And to present the presentation, we have Peter Lindsay, Senior Manager, Landsite Operations, and Heather Bornhurst, Capital Program Leader and Aviation Project Management Group. So I'm going to turn it over So I'm going to turn it over, I think Peter's with us here virtually. I'll turn it over to him.
Hi. Greetings, Commissioners. President Hasagawa. My name is Peter Lindsay. I am the Assistant Director for Landside Operations at SCA. My pleasure to introduce this item. And to provide a little bit of context, the 160th Ground Transportation Lot provides our central staging area for TNC Transportation Network Company and taxis at the airport. The lot improvements, as was described in Director Metrick's introduction, have largely been accomplished, but we still have a final phase to go related to EV charging. And the purpose of this item is to put in place funds necessary to complete that work. And with me today is Heather Bornhurst, and she'll run through the details necessary to complete the EV chargers in the lot.
Madam Commission President, were you looking for a full presentation?
Do you find that sufficient, or would you like the full presentation?
My understanding was there's going to be a short version of the presentation, but the slides were prepared.
We do have slides.
Okay, let's move forward with the presentation.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Heather Bornhurst. I'm the Capital Program Leader with the Landside Group here in Aviation Project Management, and I'll provide a quick overview of the presentation today. Can you go to the next slide, please? So we've already established our request today is for additional funding of 1.1 million so we can complete the project. Next slide, please. Just a reminder, the project purpose was to improve our operational and maintenance costs and encourage sustainable ground transportation services by providing permanent lighting systems, 10 electric vehicle chargers, and associated electrical infrastructure upgrades, some restrooms for our TNC operators, some security cameras for operational awareness, and then landscaping and irrigation according to our own standards. Next slide, please. This is a map that shows the location of the ground transportation lot on 160th Street. You can see north is up towards the top of the page, and you can see International Boulevard to your right. You can see the lot there on the south side of 160th Street. The left side is really allocated for taxi operations, and the right side is really allocated for Transportation Network Company operations. Next slide, please. These are some progress photos showing the work that we have completed in the lot. You can see the four restrooms that we provided for our Transportation Network Company partners, as well as the completed electrical infrastructure improvements to support the future installation of the EV chargers. Next slide, please. This project supports the Commission's ground transportation policy with the goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and the strategy to electrify our ground transportation fleet. These EV chargers are anticipated to be utilized by our ground transportation services. Next slide, please. In terms of our overall progress and schedule, we've completed quite a bit of the work. We've got the restrooms installed, the permanent lighting, the landscaping and irrigation improvements, and the electrical infrastructure upgrade should be completed this quarter. The bulk of the infrastructure is in place, and we're just waiting to complete the last connection in order to power up the improvements. Our remaining work is the procurement of the electrical vehicle chargers, because previously that work had been assumed to be a third-party responsibility. Complete some minor site improvements to support the new chargers, and then install and activate the chargers by year end. Next slide, please. In terms of our budget, the previous budget was 7.3 million. We are now asking for a $1.1 million increase to 8.4 million. The budget increase is due to the fact that the port is now procuring and installing those EV chargers instead of a third-party, because we had previously assumed that would be done by our partner. We do have a Department of Commerce grant for a little over $1.2 million that supports the purchase and installation of the transformer, other electrical equipment, and the EV chargers. So the majority of these improvements will get some reimbursement, and in fact, we've already requested, I believe, nearly $400,000 to be reimbursed, supporting the transformer and electrical equipment that we've already completed. And with that, are there any... Next slide, please. And then, are there any questions by the Commission?
All right. Commissioner Mohammed.
Thank you for providing that presentation. I just want to take a moment to thank the airport operations team, the aviation and project management team, and the construction team that has worked so hard in completing this project. There was a lot of components that went into the 160th parking lot improvements. There was attention from the media on this as well, and I just think that it's important for this particular project to receive a public presentation to show the different components that went into it, from the upgrades of the restrooms being sited there now, lighting in addition to the EV charging station. It shows that not only are we improving the working conditions for the drivers, but also we are also hitting our sustainability goals. And so I just appreciate everyone who's been committed to this project and making sure that it's completed and it's completed on time. The one question that I do have is, so since we're not using our partner for the EV charging, are we going to RFP that to an outside company? When is that expected to go out?
We are actually pursuing a purchase through a state contract using, that was put in place by the Department of Enterprise Services. And what's really driving that is that we have a very tight timeline in order to get our reimbursement with the Department of Commerce grant. Due to state budget constraints, the reimbursement is available through the end of this year. After that, they can't guarantee that we would receive that reimbursement. So in order to meet that schedule, we're actually using a state contract that was put in place by the Department of Enterprise Services to purchase the EV chargers.
Great. And then, how many of those EV charging stations are going to be there? And how do you ensure the usage of it, that it's equitable across the board? I mean, there's a lot of cars that show up.
We're putting in 10 charging stations, and with that, I have a partner online, Stephanie Mine in our environmental group, who's been working on some of the equity considerations with this. Stephanie, do you mind stepping in?
Yes, thanks, Heather. Stephanie Mine, the Climate Program Manager at Sea-Tac Airport. Yeah, the way that we are approaching this from an equity standpoint is that our plan is to operate these on a cost-recovery basis. And so that means, then, that we will have a very competitive charging price, and we will not be forcing any kind of subscription or anything like that. The charging rates will be at or lower than surrounding stations from that perspective. And then in terms of other users potentially using it that are not in the TNC community, we are going to do everything we can, and admittedly, we may learn some things, but we are going to make sure that it isn't available on public charging maps so that drivers, it's invisible to other drivers, it would only be visible to the TNC driving community. And we will also work with the management company that we are using through the Department of Enterprise Services to explore other options to really streamline any of the connectivity to just the TNC charging community.
Great. Thank you again for your work, and I appreciate the answers to those questions, and commend you all for the work that you've put in to make these improvements happen. Thank you for the time.
Commissioner Cho.
Yeah, real quickly, if we've decided to pivot towards installing these chargers ourselves, who's going to do the maintenance on the chargers?
Stephanie, do you mind?
Yeah, just because I've been involved in all the things we're procuring off the state contract. So to be clear, we're buying the hardware from the state contract. We're also utilizing a charger maintenance contract as well as a charger management contract. So there are three separate things we're procuring from the state contract. And the maintenance contract is also being procured, and that has certain requirements for the amount of time that a charger can be down. They also do active 24/7 monitoring. So there's always state-of-health information about the chargers going to that company so that they can respond quickly, and even use that data to see if some, if an issue might be arising that they need to attend to.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So Commissioners, the request is that we authorize Executive Director to take all steps necessary to complete the South One Sixtieth Street TNC Lot Improvement Project at Seattle Tacoma International Airport in the requested amount of $1,100,000 for a total estimated project cost of $8,400,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Mohammed, seconded by Commissioner Cho. Clerk Cart, please do call the rule for this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Calkins.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Cho.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Pheliman is not online. Commissioner Mohammed?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Hasagawa?
Aye.
Thank you. Four ayes, zero nays for this item.
Thank you. The motion carries. Okay, so we're going to move forward in the agenda. We have one new business item. Clerk Cart's going to read it into the record, and Executive Director Metrick's going to introduce it. Oh, you know what? We're going to pause for one second for a photo. Do we have to go to recess for this?
We can stand and recess, yes.
All right. So we're going to reconvene here in about five minutes at 12:48. I'm sorry, yeah, 12:48 PM. We're at recess. Let's do it.
Yeah, Aubrey. Aubrey. That's all Aubrey.
You just whipped that up? Nice. We ready? You ready? You ready? You ready? You ready? All right. All right. The time is 12:48, and we are reconvening. And so we can move forward in our agenda. We have one new business item, and Clerk Cart, can you please read it into the record, and then Executive Director Metrick will introduce it.
Thank you. This is Agenda Item 10A. Authorization for the Executive Director to complete design and permitting to replace the existing piers 1 and 2 of the Northwest Dock at Fisherman's Terminal in the requested amount of $5,900,000 for a total preliminary estimated project cost between $50 million and $70 million.
Commissioners, this item requests authorization to complete design and permitting for the replacement of piers 1 and 2 at the Northwest Dock of Fisherman's Terminal. These aging timber-supported piers built in the late 1970s are nearing the end of their service life. This project is part of our infrastructure preservation efforts. It will modernize critical infrastructure for the North Pacific Fishing Fleet, supporting maritime job, maritime job growth, and enhancing operational safety. It will also advance our sustainability goals through the removal of creosol-treated materials and insulation of efficient, energy-efficient utilities. The presenters this afternoon are Delmas Whitaker, Chief Operating Officer of the Maritime Division, and Mark Longridge, Capital Project Manager, Waterfront Project. So Delmas first.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Delmas Whitaker, the Chief Operating Officer for Maritime Division, and thank you very much this afternoon for taking time to hear our proposal. I'm joined by Mark Longridge, who will be giving the lion's share of what the rehabilitation would look like. So next slide, please.
First off, I just want to remind the Commission, the Fisherman's Terminal is the port's first property. That has been around since 1914, home of the North Pacific Fishing Fleet, as Steve has shared with you. The docks in question are very important to our operation at Fisherman's Terminal. Not only do they continue to support the Northwest Pacific Fishing Fleet, but it also helps support some of our other efforts, like it serves as a moorage location for one of our busiest tenants, which is the Uncruise, which they do not take passengers from that facility. However, they do have a sizable number of vessels in their fleet that moor at these particular docks. This is part of the inner harbor and as well as the outside on Salmon Bay, which is a deeper portion of our access to the water, which is critically important to our operation. So with that, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Longridge to provide details about the project. Mark?
Thank you, Delmas. Next slide, please. The scope of work for the Fisherman's Terminal Northwest Dock Rehabilitation Project is the replacement of the finger piers on the north and south sides of the main Northwest Dock and the associated eastern fendering system. This project will address the oldest portions of the pier that are highlighted here in red, and replace the structure, but also the electrical and utility elements of the piers. This is a Tier 2 project under the Sustainable Evaluation Framework, and part of the design will be looking at possible sustainable elements, including stormwater treatment and the overall lifecycle cost analysis of various design options that we'll be considering. Next slide. These finger piers consist of about 25,000 square feet of timber construction, and were the first part of the Northwest Dock to be constructed almost 50 years ago, as Director Metrick mentioned, in 1978 and '79 respectively. The main backbone of the pier came about a decade later and is more durable construction method, supported with concrete piles. Over the years, there have been various upgrades to the pier, including electrical improvements in 1999, and a fendering upgrade to the western portion of the main pier in 2010. Next slide. Oh, excuse me. I'm going to go back. I had a little more there. As you can see here, Pier 2 is currently wider than Pier 1 by roughly 50%, and this work will also give us the opportunity to widen Pier 1 to allow for vehicle traffic on Pier 1, a significant upgrade for our customers there as well. Okay, next slide. As Director Metrick mentioned, and Delmas, the primary users of the pier are the North Pacific Fishing Fleet, but there are other users, both concurrent and during the off-season, and our design is planned to incorporate flexibility into the design to accommodate the widest range of customers and vessels. While the piers are in functional shape now, and our maritime maintenance crews have been doing a great job keeping them usable, as you can see on the right-hand side of this slide here, much of the piers are currently deteriorating and in need of replacement, both the bull rail sections and also electrical infrastructure. Next slide. Here's our cone of uncertainty. As you know, all projects carry risk and uncertainty. We're coming to you now at the beginning of design with still some scope and budget elements to be decided. And we expect, as we resolve these design elements, we'll be able to further refine that estimate before we return to you for construction authorization. Next slide. Outline here, in very small fonts, all right, are some of the key risks that we're looking at in this work, including some continued volatility in construction material costs. We continue to see that in the construction market in general and also in electrical equipment in particular. We also need to clearly define that electrical and utility scope of our customers and tailor our design specifically to those needs. And that's going to be a big part of our design. But perhaps the greatest challenge of this work is the operational coordination to minimize the tenant impacts. The in-water portion of this work needs to be performed during a specific permit window that overlaps significantly with the home porting of the fleet. And we plan to work with the tenants and our operations staff to minimize any displacement or disruption to their operations as much as practical. We're currently assuming this work we phased over two in-water work windows to minimize that displacement of tenants. And also on the last, on the list here is permitting duration and scheduling. It's always a concern for us that we closely watch with any federally permitted work for in-water marine work. And that has been built into the schedule, assumptions of the project. Our main mitigating factors to apply as early as possible for those permits to get that clock started. Next slide. Speaking of schedule, our preliminary schedule has us starting the designer selection process as soon as we have this design authorization, with full design and permitting taking just slightly under two years to complete. Carrying the assumption of two seasons of construction, we anticipate the completion of the work in the third quarter of 2029. Next slide. As outlined in the memo, the current estimate range for the project is $50 to $70 million, the majority of which is construction funding, as you can see here in blue. Today, we're asking for the design authorization, including permitting, a little over half of the green soft cost slice that you see in the chart, for a total project authorization of $6 million to complete the design and permitting for this work. Next slide. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Calkins?
Thanks, Stu, for the presentation. When I had the chance to go through the memo and documents that you all provided, one question that kind of jumped out to me was revenue. What kind of revenue these piers provide for FT and therefore consequently for the Port of Seattle? And so it would help me to understand, you know, at a $50 to $70 million total project cost, is that recoverable or are we thinking about this more as kind of infrastructure that provides support for a broader economy that maybe isn't captured just by pier fees, but sort of general benefits to the community, like some of our more infrastructure-oriented, you know, terminals and facilities provide?
That's a good question, Commissioner. I don't have that exact number and I'll be more than happy to get that for you. But I do think that as we continue to provide that service for the North Pacific Fishing Fleet and bringing back the, you know, the fishing fleet and the other types of businesses that we have at that facility, it does provide more of that greater benefit to the, to the community for opportunities to generate jobs and different types of revenue that, that translate in different ways. But we can provide you some better numbers with regards to that.
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, my personal philosophy around this is that, you know, we simply don't capture in our direct revenue numbers the overall economic benefit that we provide. And in some ways, Fisherman's Terminal is a sort of microcosm of the larger Maritime Division, where, you know, we are infrastructure, we're a bridge to Alaska, we're a bridge to the North Pacific, and we're not going to be able to capture all that. On the other hand, that ecosystem of maritime businesses around Fisherman's Terminal provide tens of thousands of jobs, really well-paying, you know, multiple-generation family business-type jobs that is really important for us to help support. And I will note that later today, we're going to be talking about the financial performance in our Maritime Division. I don't know if Stephanie Jones, we're in the black, so that's excellent. But, so I want us to sort of, we're a public agency, so we have to think more expansively than just pure profit-driven motives in our business lines. But I think it's also important for us to recognize, what is that? If there's a gap between those two numbers, what is it? And are there ways that we can minimize that or at least recognize it so that in things like, you know, should the state be supporting this? Since it's, or the city or the county in certain instances, so. Appreciate the presentation.
Commissioner Cho?
Thanks for the presentation. And I wanted to ask a little bit about the current tenants or those who more there, you had mentioned, Uncruise and others. Are those long-term agreements? Are we providing?
Yes.
I assume that we have made arrangements for them to more somewhere else while we do these repairs? Is this project phased such that not everyone is displaced at the same time? I just want to hear a little bit about your plans for that aspect of the project.
Well, I can talk just a little bit to that. And obviously, I'm not joined here today by my senior manager, Rupert S. Duder, who's on much deserved vacation. But working with the project manager, we will be able to communicate directly with our customers to be able to find those, those opportunities where we can be able to, to place them at different docks. Or, and as was pointed out, we, you know, we are going to be faced with some seasonal work in between the fish windows. So, so I don't, we don't have the complete plan today, but we will be able to, we will be making every effort to make sure that we minimize the inconvenience to those customers.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I did want to point out, we are looking at, Fisherman's Terminal has about, you know, 300-plus fish, of fishers that do sail out of Fisherman's Terminal. And so, and the, those charters like, like Uncruise, they are several large vessels and we will, we will do what we can to make sure we accommodate them.
Great, thank you.
Mark, did you have anything else to add to that?
No, I would add that you're spot on. If we could empty the terminal, this project would be a lot more straightforward. Unfortunately, we can't do that. And that's part of why we're looking at a phased approach, to minimize the impacts, to shuffle and work with the tenants to understand what the impacts might be and how we can really minimize those to be able to accommodate both activities. So you're absolutely right.
Great, thank you.
President Hosagawa, if I can just add to the response to Commissioner Calkins. The other thing, we try to look to optimize on that return on investment. You know, this is for fishing vessels, and I think you covered that and Delmas talked about that as well, is, you know, this is to support that larger economy. But we also, off-season uses, when it's not fishing vessels, we do use it for other non-fishing purposes. So we optimize that, that, it still isn't covered completely, but we're looking to close that gap and optimize those. Of course, fishing has priority for the use of the berths, but we do fill it in wherever possible with other, other birthing and other type vessels, including like Uncruise and other types of vessels, including mortgage for private vessels as well.
All right, seeing no further questions or comments, I'll look to my colleagues to see if you have. Yes, of course you can.
This is a quick one. Is the overwater coverage that these piers represent, is that an asset as well? So if we remove them, we would still have that acreage that we could allocate somewhere else on the pier?
So our footprint, excuse me, footprint for the replacement will essentially be on the existing footprint. We're widening Pier One slightly, so the overwater coverage will be slightly larger than it is now. So we don't expect any net reduction to overwater coverage. You're right, sometimes we are able to bank that and be able to use that as an asset, but in this case, it's direct replacement essentially.
Okay, and that, so it's similar whether it's in the freshwater, above locks or in some water below?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, I appreciate.
I'll stretch a second.
That's another part of it. I'm just more out of curiosity, but thanks.
Do I have a motion or a second to approve this item? So moved?
Second.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Mohammed and seconded by Commissioner Calkins. Clerk Hart, please call the roll for this item.
Thank you, beginning with Commissioner Calkins.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Toh.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Hosagawa.
Aye.
Thank you. Four ayes, zero nays for this item.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty, we're now at presentations and staff reports. Clerk Hart, please read the next item into the record and Executive Director Metrick will introduce it.
Thank you. This is Agenda Item 11A, Quarter Two, 2025, Financial Performance Briefing.
Great.
Commissioners, as we're getting in place, I'd like to report to you that financial performance results for the first half of 2025 were strong due to delays in planned spending and strong performance in the operating divisions. Airport passenger volume for the first half of the year was 1.6% higher than the same period in 2024. Passenger growth for 2025 is expected to be 0.9% higher compared to 2024 actual. Approximately 53.1 million passengers are expected in SEA in 2025. It'll be a new record. The 2025 cruise season will run through April with, through, April through October with a projected 298 sailings and, as Sally was talking about earlier today, 1.9 million revenue passengers. For the first half of the year, grain, fishing, commercial, recreational marinas and cruise revenues exceeded budget projections. Overall, total operating revenues were 1.2 million or 0.2% above budget. Total operating expenses were 12.8 million or 3.8% lower than budget in the first half of 2025, with the net operating income before depreciation was 14 million or 7.1% above budget. For the full year, operating expenses are expected to be 11.2 million above budget, mainly due to higher payroll and outside services that we'll hear more about. We're projecting operating revenues to be 893,000 above budget, mainly due to aeronautical revenues, partially offset by lower revenues from airport, non-aero, real estate portfolio management and conference and event centers. So accordingly, you'll hear, continue to hear me offering cautious guidance for the full year as the outlook remains mixed due to tariffs, inflation, geopolitical and economic uncertainties as the port continues to invest in our facilities and infrastructure. So we're also forecasting to spend in, in infrastructure, 925 million on capital this year. So we have a number of presenters this afternoon. We have Elizabeth Morrison, interim Chief Financial Officer, Michael Tong, Director of Corporate Budget. And then we have Heidi Papachak, Director of Aviation Finance and Budget, and Kelly Zupan, Director of Seaport Finance and Budget. So I'm going to turn over now to Elizabeth. Elizabeth?
Thank you. Next slide, please. Good afternoon. Staff is pleased to present the second quarter financial report. This Q2 report is important because we, at this point of the year, have a good sense of where we're going to be trending for the full year. And that is also important for informing the budget for 2026, which is currently underway. As, as Executive Director Metrick described, the, the results are helping guide how we are approaching the 2026 budget. The operations are looking reasonably good. The forecast for the inplanements is above 2024 and will be a record, but slightly below what we had budgeted in 2025, which may reflect some softening in the economy. Cruise is on track to meet budget with respect to passengers and ship calls. The operating revenues are projected to be slightly above budget. As Executive Director Metrick noted, that's largely due to the aeronautical revenues. And I like to separate the, the cost recovery aeronautical revenues from the non-cost recovery businesses of our non-aero at the airport and the seaport. So we do have some indications that, that the, some of the non-aero revenues may be softer due to economic uncertainty. That is only in part. There are other dynamics going on that Heidi will describe more fully. But we may be seeing some of the impacts of the economic uncertainty rippling through our revenue projections for the year. Operating expenses are noted to be well above what we had budgeted and that's primarily driven by payroll cost. For the 2026 budget, we're really focusing on trying to manage payroll costs because that is such a significant factor in our overall expenses, representing about 60% of, of overall operating expenses. And Michael Tong can provide more details on, on why those payroll expenses are above budget. With capital, we are almost exactly tracking to budget, which is a very good indicator of planning for capital spending. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to my colleague, Heidi Papachak, to walk through the airport details.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Good afternoon, Commission President, Commissioners and Executive Director Metrick. Heidi Papachak, Director of Aviation Finance and Budget. I'll provide a brief overview of the Aviation Division Q2 financial performance. Next slide, please. As Executive Director Metrick and Elizabeth alluded to, this slide illustrates our total passenger growth. As you can see to the far right, the orange is our 2025 forecast of passengers at 53.1 million. And to the left of that, you'll see our 2025 budget assumption for passenger growth at 53.5 million. That's slightly below what we budgeted for the, that the forecast is slightly below what we budgeted. But when we look at 2024 actuals and compare that to the forecast, it's up roughly nearly 1%. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of our operating expenses for Q2 in particular. The bar chart illustrates that we are currently under budget by 3.4%, a little over 9 million. And primarily is the variance associated with salaries and benefits, modest variance related to the compensation project and mostly due to the labor contracts that were approved in 2025, roughly about $5.1 million, and also some lower charges to capital. Next, we have the outside services is underspent, approximately $18 million. Just kind of slower spending. We anticipate that to pick up in Q3. Next, other expenses are higher, again, lower charges to capital. And then lastly, lower charges from the central services groups, about $2.3 million, which we anticipate that to pick up as well. Next slide. So this is our overall financial summary, looking at year-end forecast. As you can see at the top, the revenues, looking at aeronautical revenues, this is our cost recovery revenues, as Elizabeth alluded to a moment ago. When we look at the budget to forecast, we are forecasting about $6.7 million above budget. And that's associated with the TSA exit lane staffing contract that was approved earlier this year and that was not included in the 2025 budget. And so there is that variance there. Looking at the non-aeronautical side, we see a net reduction in budget, about $4.7 million, to be under budget. And that's associated with slower growth in our public parking, employee parking and some of the ADR lines of business than we assumed in the budget. So we have, with public parking, last year, we launched the reserve parking program on the fourth floor and that's been very successful. And we are seeing, you know, some behavior changes from some of the drive-up customers. And we're monitoring that as we move forward in 2025. And also associated with some of the lower employment growth we're seeing in the ADR section of the non-aeronautical revenues. But overall, looking at the net total revenues that we are forecasting is to be approximately $2 million. And looking at the total O&M expenses, we have approximately $9 million of over budget associated, again, with the TSA exit lane staffing contract as well as the payroll expenses that we are forecasting at year-end. Next slide, please. And so with this illustration, it's just a bar chart of the full-year forecast. It's $9 million. I won't go into detail, but just the illustration of looking at the full-year forecast for the Aviation Division. Next slide, please. This slide provides an overview of our debt service coverage ratio. We have This slide provides an overview of our debt service coverage ratio. We have a minimum target of, an internal policy of 1.4x debt service coverage target for the Aviation Division, and at the year-end, we're anticipating to meet that 1.82 debt service coverage. It's roughly two basis points lower than what we put in the budget, but we anticipate that it'll be pretty close to where we approved in budget. Next slide, please. So looking at our airport development fund balance for the 2025 budget, we have 829.8 million approved, and that is essentially our 18 months of O&M days cash on hand that we have in our reserve, and our forecast for year-end for our fund balance is 830 million. So we are going to reach that target by year-end, which is positive news. Next slide, please. And lastly, as it was mentioned earlier, far as our capital spending, we are 99% on target with some modest changes to, for instance, the Sea Concourse. There's a reduction in spending there and their actual spending, so we'll see in the total number underspend. But overall, we are on track to spend with our capital program. And I believe that concludes the aviation section, and I will turn it over to Kelly Zupan, my colleague in Seaport.
So we're actually going to pause here and see if we have any questions from my colleagues, and I'll start with Commissioner Cho.
Yeah, thanks, Heidi. Always appreciate your summary of the state of our finances. Just real quickly, on Slide 10, when you talk about capital spending forecast, it says here that, well, first of all, saving $12 million on steel is great, so that's positive news. As far as the SCA Gateway Project is concerned, it says we're spending less due to changes in billing. Does that just mean we're expecting to get billed in '25?
So for that-
Or '26, I guess?
We have determined that we're spending less based on what we thought we would spend associated with contingency. So it's like, it's lower and also it's delayed. Yeah, yeah. So with the, as I understand it, with our contingency spending that we anticipated, it's lower, and, but we, we're moving forward with the project.
Okay, so it's not just that they're kicking the invoice down to next year?
Right, right, right.
Okay, we can move forward to Seaport. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. So, next slide, please. This first slide is the, some of the key Seaport metrics through June of 2025. Currently, what you're seeing is the demand for our facilities in the seaport, especially the in-water, still remains high. And so as we go into the budget season, we're going to come to you with some different ways to appropriately, you know, charge the prices of those within, within all of our constituents' needs and whatnot. Currently, the container volumes are a little front-loaded at the beginning of the year, and we're expecting to still hit budget on the container volumes as we get into the end of the year, but there's still some uncertainty ahead. We already talked a little bit about cruise calls and passengers with you. They're on track to budget. Our occupancy, again, is Shulshul Marina is staying really high. There's just a lot of demand for, like I said, that in-water use. And we've had a lot of success in the first half of the year at the grain terminal. There seems to be a real high demand for corn at the grain terminal. We're fingers crossed that that carries into the second half of the year as well. Next slide, please. All right. This is, this slide here is the, really the aggregate of all of the Seaport divisions, including maritime, economic development, and joint venture. Year-to-date, we're really quite favorable, again, with some of the front-loaded cargo activity, and there's been a lot of delayed spending on outside services. Much of this has to do with the cyber attack, which also, you know, took a little longer getting some more contracts through, and just in general, it was, took a little longer getting going on the first half of the year. We are, we're forecasting a catch-up of this spending in the second half of the year, along with an unbudgeted environmental credit. There's a grain terminal billing adjustment, some operational cleanups, and higher-than-expected payroll, which Michael and Elizabeth spoke about. All these items together result in a forecasted operating income of about $3.3 million below budget. Next slide, please. Okay. Here's a brief summary of the Maritime Division financials with both the year-to-date and the forecast. It's been a great start, again, for the revenues at the grain terminal and the marinas. Cruise is on track. Portfolio management, we're pretty close to budget at our conference and event centers, and in the second half of the year, we do have some occupancy that we're filling three spaces at the second half of the year with some other maritime businesses for our portfolio management group. On the expense side, again, the cyber attack, it's really delaying some of the expenses. We are expecting at the year-end a negative payroll variance, and we have, we continue to have remediation costs, you know, with Terminal 18, the dredging, and also for six and eight that we've got booked for the year. Next slide, Maritime. And so as Elizabeth mentioned earlier, we are, we're actually over budget for one of the first times I can remember at mid-year on our capital delivery, looking to end the year basically in between a little above budget and less than what we came to you last budget season or plan of finance season with is our plan of finance spending. Next slide, please. So getting used, given the reorg that we had last year, getting you all used to how we're presenting the Economic Development Division, you know, any feedback is welcome as well on it. But in terms of the PNL that goes into our forecast and our funding, that's what I have listed on this particular slide here. Most of that is really just the tourism group that falls to the bottom line on economic development. We also have the Duamish Hub, some of the, or the EDD tax levy, which Duamish Hub falls into that as well. And so we did get a positive variance on there from the GAZB-87 changes. Usually, we are leasing out, but on this one, we're actually leasing the other direction, so it's a unique time on that. And so the other thing with the forecast, one of the things that we're seeing is the two-year cycle impact. We'll begin to see a ton of matching grants for both tourism and our economic development grants with some of the regional towns and cities. Next slide, please. So I, this slide, I'm just showing the departmental expenses for the Economic Development Division as they pretty much charge out to maritime, aviation, aside from tourism, they, that would stick in the EDD, everything really goes out or to a levy group. And year-to-date, we're well below spending like other groups and, you know, plan on, I know A is planning on making that up in the back half of the year, and we're starting to see more contracts come to fruition, and again, those matching grants. With that, any questions?
Seeing none, we can move forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Executive Director Metrick. I'm going to go for the central services and then also provide you a snapshot that Port Y will up as well. Next slide, please. So for central services, total operating expenses for the first half, the first half the year were 3 million or 3.1% lower than the budget. And on the chart, on the right-hand side, you can see the detail, the payroll, 1.2 million over budget, and partly due to the COM project, and also we have several mid-year, new FT approved it this year as well, and also a little bit less charged to capital. And then, so what end up in the expenses side, given everything's at the same headcount. The other budget, main, the major budget variance or budget saving at this point is really due to the outside services. A large part of that is because the project delay, but also underspent in equipment expenses and also employee travel and other training expenses as well. Next slide, please. So looking for the full year, overall operating expenses, 3 million, a little bit over 3 million over budget, again, mainly due to the payroll. But we also have some unbudgeted item as well, you know, and the unlitigated expenses and other expenses that happened this year, and including some of the info security contract that was not in the 2025 budget that happened last year as well as this year after the cyber attack. So the police and then the engineering PCS, pretty much way on the budget for the police, and then, and during PCS, we have some delay in the capital spending and some saving in the outside contract, and so that, we saw a little bit over 2 million below budget for the year. On the capital side, we expect about 6 million below budget for the year. Next slide, please. One more, please. So I want to provide you a Port Y will up for the year-to-date, except for, as we mentioned, several key number here. If you look at the operating revenue, total 1.2 million above budget at this point, but also the other number I do want to point out to you is the second-last role compared to the 2024 actual year-to-date. We were 39 million or almost 8% about the 2024 actual, so it's a pretty good number there. And then the other numbers, really the 40 million in net operating income before depreciation, so it's a pretty good number year-to-date. And so still, also compared to same period last year, seven, a little bit over 7 million of 3.5% over the same period last year. So year-to-date number, pretty good. Next slide, please. For the, for the full year, again, you know, the expenses, revenue, operating revenues pretty close to the budget, a little bit under 900K above budget. Expenses mainly due to some of the TSA staffing contract that Heidi mentioned a little bit earlier, as well as some of the overall mid-year approval of the new position and also the COM project, and a few couple of the unbudgeted outside service items. So it's about 11 million over budget. I think that's a little bit uncertainty as well, you know, so some department tend to be a little bit conservative. So we'll see in the Q3, expect probably a little bit less on the budget area for the year, but this is what we forecasted as of Q2. So also compared to the same period last year, as you can see, the NOI net operating income before depreciation, 40 million about the same period last year. So it's still a pretty good number overall. Next slide, please. So here's overall capital spending for the year. This is very, very close to the budget, 99.9, 99.8% to the budget. That's what we forecasted. So, so here's all the information that I want to present to you, but there's a lot of detail in the appendix slides as well as the individual reports. So that concludes our presentation. Happy to answer any further questions that you may have.
Thank you. Okay, so this is our chance if we have comments or questions. Commissioner Calkins.
Just to start with the top line, a second year in a row in which we've breached $1 billion in total revenue. And also, I'm, even factoring in depreciation, the port generates a lot of cash, and historically, we've used that cash to turn it right back into capital projects that benefit the community, and that's our kind of modus operandi. I think, you know, the mantra that Steve has carried through the first six months of this year about planning for next year, that we really do need to think conservatively. The kind of good news is that if in a pinch we needed to scale back capital investments for a while, we would likely maintain good cash flow, that's not a good long-term plan. We don't want to defer maintenance or miss out on opportunities because we aren't investing, but it does, it is encouraging for me to see those really strong cash flow numbers. So, thanks for the very transparent reporting and continued, I mean, we just have a truly remarkable team that puts these together for us each year and makes them palatable to non-experts like us and transparent to the public, and so I really appreciate that. And, I mean, all, what are we at? 2,700 employees should get credit for being a public agency that is performing so well. So appreciation to everybody for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Calkins. All right, well, I'd just like to thank and excuse the panel. I appreciate your presentation, all the work that you do every day to keep us afloat.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And we can move forward. It concludes our business meeting agenda for the day, but are there any closing comments at this time or motions relating to committee referrals for my colleagues? Commissioner Calkins?
Just a couple of fun things. I think he left, but Delmas was here earlier. I know he's a very active participant in carrying out seafare each year, and I think it went great this year. I think bringing the, I didn't get to participate, but it sounds like the parade down the waterfront was a really great reintroduction and showing off the new waterfront amenities. And I also just want to shout out the land of enchantment, New Mexico, where I got to spend that week. I went with my son on a hike, and it totally blew me away. I was expecting, you know, all desert, and the parts that we hiked through were green and beautiful, and that was my first time really spending any time in New Mexico. So not a port state, though, landlocked, but, yeah, really a great experience there.
Speaking of seafare, I think we should have a float. I'm in favor of a cruise vessel or a container ship.
Okay. Is that official referral to committee?
No.
All right. Executive Director Metrick, any closing comments from yourself, sir?
No, thank you, Commissioners, for, especially looking at that budget today. Appreciate your, looking at that as we look for the rest of the year and into 2026. So thank you all. And thank you for the recognition of our firefighters.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your good work. Hearing no further comments, have a note for the business. The time is 1:32 PM, and we are adjourned.